Okay, good morning. I'm going to call to order the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting for November 19th. Sorry we were a little tiny bit late, my sincere apologies. We will start with a salute to the flag. Roger, will you lead us? Just stand up, you know the pledge. I know you do. Lead us, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right. Madam Clerk, would you give us a roll call, please?
Of course. Von Hartung Chair.
Here.
Bob Lucy Vice Chair.
Here.
Marc Bergbogler.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Janie Herman.
Here.
Interim County Manager David Slaro.
Here.
Deputy DA Nate Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galacini, Chief Deputy Clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, appearance, item number three.
Yeah, item number three today is an appearance by Bettina Shearer, the Conservation District Program Manager in Nevada Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. And I believe we've got a 10-minute presentation for you.
Okay. Welcome. I think it's on. It was.
There's no red light.
Madam IT, can we? You're just gonna have to talk really loud.
I can do that.
No, there you are, now you're on.
Okay. So, hello, I'm Bettina Shearer and I'm the Nevada Conservation Districts Program Manager. However, I am going through a transition and I will be leaving state service on the 27th. So, I brought with me the staff specialist from the Winnebago and Washoe County areas, Melanie Ayton, as well as the new Nevada Conservation Districts Program Manager Zachary Ormsby. So, we're gonna tag-team this a little bit, but we wanted you to have adequate representation of program staff. So, is it just this? Okay. All right. So, conservation districts were born of the Dust Bowl and the concerns following the Dust Bowl prompted legislation declaring soil and water conservation as a national policy and priority. Voluntary support from landowners was instrumental in the success of conservation work on private lands and local leadership was needed to coordinate agency efforts to connect local conditions and priorities. So, that birthed 1937 Model Conservation District Law that provided, enabling legislation for state governors to establish conservation districts within their specific states. So, within Nevada, conservation districts draw their authority from Nevada Revised Statute 548, and in 1937 that was authored, and it's the Declaration of Legislative Policy. And it's hereby declared as a matter of legislative determination that persons in local communities are best able to provide basic leadership and direction for the planning and accomplishment of the conservation and development of renewable natural resources through organization and operation of conservation districts. There are state and federal laws and memoranda of understanding that place, in place for providing a working relationship with conservation districts as a cooperating entity, and this provides a place at the table to provide suggestions, amendments, and assistance in development of local conservation planning, and it ensures that federal and state-proposed plans incorporate local resource concerns to the maximum extent possible. Within Nevada, there are 28 conservation districts, and conservation districts are comprised of a locally-elected board of five officials, and then depending on the makeup of the conservation district, there are county and municipality appointees. The locally-elected supervisors from the communities in which they serve, they serve a four-year term, and then the appointees representing counties and municipalities serve a two-year term. Within Nevada, the Conservation Districts Program is housed within the Nevada Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, and conservation districts are an entity of local government, and therefore meetings are subject to open-meeting law. Each district is governed by a board of supervisors who are locally-elected residents who serve without pay, though they are reimbursed for any expenses they incur on district business. Typically, one city and one county appointee sit on the board, but the number varies depending on the geographic makeup of each respective conservation district. In addition to local representation, the Nevada Association of Conservation Districts, as well as the National Association of Conservation Districts, provide a unified voice acting as a nonprofit to communicate the needs on a national or state level. Within Washoe County specifically, there are three conservation districts. There is the Vaya Conservation District, the Washoe-Story Conservation District, as well as the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District. This presentation was specifically requested after county funds were provided to both the Vaya and Washoe-Story Conservation Districts, so thank you very much for those funds, and we wanted to give you a quick update on those districts' activities specifically. So, again, in Washoe County, there are three conservation districts. The Vaya-CD boundary lies just north of Pyramid Lake and continues to the Oregon State Line. The Washoe-Story Conservation District includes Story County, and between the two CDs, they encompass over 4 million acres of Great Basin Desert and rangeland. And although there are district boundaries, conservation districts can work across district and county lines and multiple jurisdictional boundaries. While northern Washoe County is sparsely populated, it makes up for that difference by hosting diverse and valuable habitat in rangelands and natural resources. The Vaya Conservation District specifically provides a large amount of priority sage grouse habitat, and the map on the left shows the red, which is priority sage grouse habitat, the green is general habitat, and the yellow is other. And over three-quarters of the district is essential habitat for sage grouse. The Vaya Conservation District also has three main critical watersheds, and Washoe-Story has four main watersheds, and many conservation district plans are concerned with impacts within their watersheds. The conservation districts can utilize these divisions to focus funds and help coordinate the projects on a larger landscape scale. We got a quick, that's a duplicate site that's gonna come up later. So, essentially, the mission of a conservation district is to take the available technical, financial, and educational resources, whatever their source, focus them, and leverage them to the best capabilities to serve the communities and the natural resource concerns within the conservation district boundaries. The conservation districts are able to work in cooperation with counties, USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service, state and federal fish and wildlife organizations, nonprofits, BLM, volunteer groups, and other locally-led organizations such as weed districts, water districts, grazing boards, and many others. Most importantly, conservation districts are founded on the philosophy that conservation decisions should be made at the local level. The responsibility of a conservation district is to seek local individuals who can work together to develop and formalize conservation plans to address natural resource concerns or policies that are district or county-wide. Conservation districts develop and utilize partnerships which can have a positive influence on our natural resources through on-the-ground conservation project delivery. Nationally, conservation districts operate under the following general policies: that conservation should be led locally; that conservation district boards are responsive to landowners, operators, and the community as a whole; that local representation is achieved by the election of community members; the best agricultural land should stay in agriculture; and the final responsibility of conservation lies with the landowners. I'm gonna pass it over to Melanie now.
So, the reason I'm gonna do this portion is that I'm the local technical specialist that works from Lander County all the way to Washoe County, so I help them facilitate the grants, do the technical work on the ground, and then also help them develop project ideas, so I do a lot of the liaison work. So, I'm gonna do these updates just to kinda give you an idea of where those funds went. Again, thank you for those, and then what our project goals are. So, a couple examples of conservation work that have been done here in Washoe County, but also just throughout the state are administering grants and those for typically on agricultural lands, we help a lot of producers, but we do a lot of urban ag projects as well. We do wildlife habitat improvements, hedge rows, wind rows, bless you. We can provide materials, you guys were talking about that slash material earlier from the recycling tree program, we do a small one like that in Winnebago, and we've actually been building Beaver Dam analogues with recycled Christmas trees. So far, it's been incredibly successful, using completely natural resources to capture sediment and rebuild streams. Definitely an idea for, if they're still here. We work alongside other local boards, districts, I work a lot with my county commissioners in the smaller counties and just have a really great relationship with all these guys. Specifically, Vaya Conservation District is working on a couple projects this year. They work a lot with California just because of where they're seated. We typically meet in Cedarville because there's not a spot in Vaya to meet. We do occasionally meet at a landowner's home, but to keep with open-meeting law and trying to make it as accessible as possible, we typically meet in Cedarville and we work with our BLM partners up there, our state partners, and other federal entities to incorporate PJ removal, habitat enhancement. We're working on some ag expo outreach so that people know whether they're going to an RCD, which is a Resource Conservation District in California, or a Conservation District in Nevada. We sponsor Range Camp students every year, we have multiple scholarships that go out, and we're waiting for a $300,000 grant to go through for pinion juniper removal up in the Vaya and northern Washoe area. Washoe-Story has been adapting over the years, we're becoming more urban ag. As we lose our producers in this area, we don't have that producer input as much as we used to, but it's still a primary focus for us, and absolutely, we want those producers to come in and voice their concerns. But again, we do the same thing, we're providing Range Camp opportunities for students, scholarships. We're working on developing a new cooperative weed management area, which hopefully that group will come and present to you once they're fully-fledged. We're in the process of assisting them getting their Secretary of State filing done. Once that's done, we will have a state entity that will work cooperatively across Washoe and Story Counties to treat weeds in a more facilitated and cooperative manner across all entities. We're also working on assisting with the Little Washoe Dam repairs and efforts through a federal program. So, in summary, we do a lot of on-the-ground work, we're really looking for producers and other landowners to come in, give us their input, provide some opportunities for program funding, and we're always interested in hearing what local landowners wanna see done on their ground and what protections they wanna see out on their landscape.
Wow, well done.
Ding!
Good job, holy mackerel. All right, Commissioners, any questions? Okay, all right, Commissioner Herman, thank you for serving on those boards, I know you're on both Washoe-Story and the Vaya. Okay, do you have anything else for us?
No, and I'll just throw out there, we're always happy to give updates. I don't believe either one of my chairmen are here today from Vaya or Washoe, but we're always happy to come and give project updates. I'd love to give you guys an update after we get that larger grant for pinion juniper removal, and then Washoe-Story's new cooperative weed management area, we'll certainly be looking to get on the agenda to give you guys an update.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity and thank you for the funding.
Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, that takes us to item number four, which is new employee introductions, so if we can go down and introduce some new employees, that would be great.
Hi, my name's Amanda White Cloud, I'm an Office Assistant Two for the Criminal Division of the District Attorney's Office.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Bear, I'm in the Treasurer's Office, and I'm an Account Clerk One.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Guzman Solis, I am at the Assessor's Office, and I am an OA Three.
And good morning, I'm Mike Morene, I'm registrar of voters, and I'm the Department System Specialist.
Mr. Manager, I believe that takes us to item number five.
That does. Item number five is certificates honoring our Washoe County employees. As you are all aware, Washoe County encourages lifelong learning and the professional development of all employees. A program administered by our Human Resources Department, the Excellence in Public Service, is a series of certificate programs designed to support employee development and performance, and the completion of these courses over two years demonstrates the employees' commitment to continuous personal and professional improvement and Washoe County's journey to excellence. So, today, we have a few of these to hand out, starting with Casey Berry, an Office Support Specialist for the Human Services Agency, who has completed three of these programs: the Essentials of High-Performing Teams, the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness, and the Essentials of Support Staff Certificate Program.
Goodness, congratulations. Did you do this in your spare time, three of them? My word.
Next, we have Alicia Christensen, Family Support Specialist for the District Attorney's Office, who has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program.
Congratulations.
We have Kimberly Graham, Administrative Assistant One for the Health District, who has completed the Essentials of SAP for Financial Staff Certificate Program.
Congratulations.
Carol Hobbs, an Office Assistant Three for the Assessor's Office, has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program.
Congratulations.
We have Karen Sommers, Office Support Specialist for the Sheriff's Office, who has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness Certificate Program. And today, we also have Michael White, Storekeeper for the Health District, who has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness Certificate Program.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. I think that takes us to item number six, Mr. Manager.
That does take us to item number six, I'm gonna stay down here for this one. This is our Washoe County Recognition Committee. This is a program for recognizing our shining stars. These are people who have received three shining stars through our program. I believe this was a Commissioner-led or requested program that our Recognition Committee has taken full-fledged with. I've got a few recognitions here, these are going back a few months, we will be doing these over the next few board meetings. But what I would like to do is recognize in groups of, batches of three, our employees that have received these three nominations either from the public or internal staff, have them stand so they can be recognized by the board, and then their certificates are available out in the lobby. So, if the staff members are here, please stand to be recognized. Like I say, we'll do groups of three here. So, Gracie Flores with the Assessor's Office, Tyler Lefnier with the Animal Services Department, we have Laura Rose with the Community Services Department, Stacy Jackson with the Assessor's Office, Byron Tam with Technology Services, Patrick Martin with Animal Services, and Carmen Mendoza with the Health District. That's our first group, thank you all very much. Our second group includes Julio Pec Garcia with the Health District, Maria Jimenez with the Health District, Victoria Nicholson Hornblower, also with the Health District, Jackie Chides with the Health District, Esmeralda Contreras with Human Resources, Elaine Anignasto with the Human Resources Department, Josh Newman with the Human Services Agency, Sarah Harrell with Community Services Department, Nick McCassy with the Community Services Department, and Robin Kindred with the Community Services Department. And our last group for today, Sarah Singleton with the Clerk's Office, Tom Schley with the Animal Services Department, Crystal Gomez, again with Animal Services, Michelle Jakem... I'm gonna butcher this one, I'm sorry, Michelle. Yakem... Yakem... Yakemowicz? Is Michelle here? I'm sorry. Jeff Hoppy with the District Attorney's Office, Byron Collins with the Health District, Virginia McDonald with the Health District, Frank Cobble with the Health District, Kelly Verling with the Health District, Mary Ellen Matzol with the Health District, Mark Dugan with the Health District, Catherine Sullivan with the Health District, Health District was big that month, Walt West with the Community Services Department, Moira Howenstein with the Community Services Department, and Jonna Chisholm with the Community Services Department.
So, Mr. Manager, if I had to take a shot at it, it would be Yakimowicz, but that would just be my guess. Sorry?
Yakimowicz.
Oh, she pronounces the J, okay, Yakimowicz.
All right, well, thank you, I apologize again for that. But our Washoe County Recognition Committee has done a great job in recognizing our employees and putting together a program whereby not only the public, but our own internal staff, because we do have staff members that support internal staff, can be recognized for going above and beyond their daily duties.
Thank you so much. We are now on to item number seven.
Mr. Chair, item number seven is our public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission's agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during the individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call public comment?
First up, we have Ms. Carol Black, followed by Ms. Elise Weatherly. We need the overhead, and I have some items to pass out to the board.
Welcome, Ms. Black.
Good morning, and thank you. And you don't know it seems to have these in hand for me to start today, I'm prepared. So, I just wanted to say one thing, which is I'm gonna be talking a little bit about public health and safety, and I do have a background which is potentially applicable. I have both two basic science degrees, biochemistry, and I also am a physician, a retired physician, just so you know, so I do have an MD. No longer licensed to practice, but I do have that training. So, I just wanted to refer back to what we talked about last week. When this comes on, we're gonna be talking a little bit about, there we go, just two boxes on the table I gave you last week, haven't given you again, but basically speak to the question we talked about, oversight in the short-term rental arena being much less than for other forms of transient lodging. And we were gonna focus a little bit about these two columns, which have to do with some of the services and their impacts. The first has to do with the, you know, looking at occupancy, and we talked some about that last week, I'm not gonna dwell on that. I just wanna make one comment, which you know and has been recognized, about the importance of thinking about occupancy in terms of fires. That's a fire that happened in Incline about a year ago, in a short-term rental without fire alarms on the first floor, apparently, you know, smoke detectors, and had 16 occupants, eight of whom were children. They were all successfully evacuated mercifully, but it was, I gather, a struggle. So, just to continue the emphasis, I know you're focusing on this area in the ordinance, but just to emphasize it. And now, I wanna go to the next box, which had to do with some of the public health and safety recommendations that are included in the public accommodations, part of code that is part of your requirements for all other transient occupancy, and I just wanna have you take a quick look at this and ask you a question. Which of these guys would you like to meet during your short-term rental stay? Many of these requirements relate to disinfection, pest avoidance, and these are all pests that can either carry disease like West Nile virus, that's a mosquito there, or be part of poorly laundered linen and surfaces. These are different kinds of organisms, which I will happy to tell you what they are if you want to, but I'm not gonna waste time on it. Bacteria, lots of antibiotic-resistant bugs around in the world. And this, you have, everything that's red on this table is not addressed unless you include some specific regulation in your ordinance related to public health and safety.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much for your time.
And by the way, the common louse, dust mite, and simyxlectularias, which is the common bed bug.
I'm so sorry, I didn't understand, I didn't hear you.
That's okay, thank you.
Okay. So, you want me to give copies of these to... Yeah, okay.
Next up, we have Ms. Elise Weatherly, followed by Ms. Catherine Snedeker.
Welcome, Ms. Weatherly.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly, Washoe County. You know what I thought I would do today? Anybody interested in some free business and financial advice? Let's face it, we're all about making a living, right? We all have to make money. Well, I have an investment counselor named Steve Self, who is part of Ameriprise, he is also the drummer for the Carolyn Dolan Group, imagine that, a book, an accountant that's also a good musician, can you imagine such a thing? Anyway, I had told Steve, not asked him, I said, "Don't put a penny into the Eldorado stock," and he agreed. He came up with some very logical, very common sense recommendations that I took, because I like books at balance. He probably already knows something that I forgot to consider, and that's not to invest in any company where the integrity is lacking. In my opinion, I'll make sure not put a cent into GSR either, is that Grand Sierra Resorts, whatever. Their company is a mess, and their owners don't seem to care. If they cared, they probably would have taken my communication with them seriously. If they had taken it seriously, they probably would have acknowledged it. If they had acknowledged it, they probably would have contacted me. Instead, I discovered that they lied about me, and their HR lady, so much like the Eldorados, didn't give a hoot, okay? It's easier to brush people off that are telling you the truth by classifying them as crazy. Can you imagine that? If you try to tell people the truth, even about their books, they call you crazy. The reason they do that is because then they won't be held accountable for their ineptness, their incompetence, or their lies. Okay, their W2s were a mess, I fixed them, and I told them how they could avoid that in the future, and it was a nightmare. What I will say is Washoe County seems to have some really good employees, but they also have some very inept ones, you guys, and nobody seems to really care about that. In your opinion, and this is the main thing I wanna focus on, everyone isn't equal, all right? So, let's boil that equality into equity. Let's compare Steve Self to Christopher Michael Longo. Anybody know who that is? That's a man who, yeah, went home and murdered his wife after having intimate relationships with her, and then drowned his children, you know? So, one helps people and one murders, but they're, in the eyes of the world, they're the same people. How about Tom Gordon, owner of Inspired Amateur Productions, that is one of the best engineers I've ever met in my life, compared to Richard Allen Davis, you know, the guy that murdered 12-year-old Paulie Klaus? Similarity? Do you know that fake churches teach that God loves everyone the same, so all men have equality with the murderers? Mr. Longo, while enjoying his new life in Mexico, said, "Well, his family was just to sleep, you just sleep and you die." Did you know that Paul Farren, the brother-in-law of Zodiac victim Darlene Farren, my brother-in-law, thinks the same thing? You just die and you fall asleep. In other words, there's no accountability, you just get away with what you want. So, what I would say is when you invest in businesses, if they are full of liars, cheats, steal, thieves, slanders, unfaithful, unloyal, ripping off their investors and laughing while they're doing it, Gary Carano, they have no integrity, they have frauds, and they're being bad to their employees, I would say, "Don't invest in 'em." I'll leave my business card in the back.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Catherine Snedeker, followed by Ms. Nona Perry.
I'm Catherine Snedeker, a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural woman. I'm giving you formal notice, County Manager, please take notice, that no one is to arrive at my property unannounced. If you're Community Services, if you're Animal Services, if you're the Health Department, if you're the Assessor's Office, or any other department in this county, you either call me and make arrangements, or you send me a letter. You do not arrive unannounced. You will be thrown out. I will not take time with anybody who arrives... I will not take time with anybody who arrives unannounced, specifically Community Services. You want to talk to me? Oh. You want to talk to me? You write me a letter, or you call me? Otherwise, you're a trespasser, a criminal trespasser. And it can be dangerous. Oftentimes, I answer the door with my shotgun. Don't put yourselves in that position. That's my formal notice, and I expect you to tell every department that that's the case. Now, up until 1938, a natural person was a human being. But then, when the Supreme Court decided to define what a person is, which is an artificial entity, a natural person is an artificial entity. It's the director of a one-person company. Man or woman is a human being, not a natural person. An individual is someone who comes here to live permanently but does not want to be a citizen. That's called a legal resident. If you're here from another country, living here permanently, you are a legal resident. If you're a native-born citizen, you are not a legal resident. You may not presume and assume that I am a corporation. I am not, and I will not be treated like one. And I'm giving you formal notice right now that that is the case. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Nona Perry.
Commissioners, thank you. My name is Nona Perry. I reside here in Reno, Nevada. I live at 3,000 Dickerson Road. I live directly adjacent to Oxbow Park, which is to the west of me, along my fence line. This property has been in my family since the 1930s, and originally, Oxbow Park was part of our property. It is now a nature park. It is very much appreciated by most. It is a place for protection of the wild animals, the few that are left around. I kind of feel like I'm the last wild animal in the park that's a human, but I do love the park very much. I am very concerned, I went to the city, I've been there several times, and I was told maybe to approach the county as well. I'm very concerned about fire danger. The park is dry as a bone, the foliage has grown up over the years incredibly. There is a huge amount of influx of homeless people in the park. They come in through the railroad property, they come in, there's just a pole that's a gate, they came in under the gate. They bring things, I've seen them carry things as big as a couch, I've seen them bring suitcases, all kinds of things. About a week ago, I was awakened at 2:00 in the morning by what I thought was a chainsaw. When I went outside in my pajamas, got a light, got my dog, I could see the fire department was there. There was a fire in the park. I think it was called in by someone across the river. Thank God, it was not windy. It burned about a little less than a quarter acre. They got it out. I did not bother them, they were busy. However, this just happened to be the thing that I'm the most concerned about. I went down the next day and saw the damage. I did not see where someone homeless had started it, but it was on that part of the park, the part that is kind of a no-man's land between the railroad property and the city of Reno property. I love the park. It is usually used by county school buses, bringing kids that usually live in apartments, things they never get to see wildlife. They get to come in there, and there are some very hidden paths in that park where the homeless could easily attack someone. They're not all mentally well. The kids go through there and get to see the beaver, and the osprey, and the ducks, and they're usually just with their teachers. There are times when I see some very scary people down in there, and I would very much appreciate if this would come to the top of some kind of list of priorities, before the park is just a bunch of stumps that is not home to either the wild animals or anybody else who cares about nature in Reno and in Washoe Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Rhonda Tysler.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. When last week Commissioner Jung said she always sees the same faces from Incline Village and doesn't think we're representative of other Incline residents, I had to smile, because every time we attend the meeting here, we also see the same faces. For reasons we all understand, you hold your meetings here in Reno at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesdays, which severely limits the number of employed residents who can attend. Not only is there a minimum 60-minute commute over Mount Rose Highway, inclement weather and road conditions make the drive difficult for retirees. So, don't be too quick to judge our small group as unrepresentative. We're simply the ones who are willing and able to show up to speak for our allotted three minutes. As Commissioner Burkbigler will attest, when we hold meetings in Incline Village on topics of general public interest, such as short-term rentals or parking, hundreds of residents show up. But when we're forced to drive to Reno on a workday, regardless of weather conditions or road construction, only a few of us can make it. For this reason, we're asking you to help us make our local Citizens Advisory Board more useful. Because the cab is held in Incline, more residents can attend and would if items on the agenda were of general public interest. For whatever reason, the purview of our cab has been arbitrarily restricted mainly to variances and special use permits. When I wrote to Planner Trevor Lloyd about putting other items on the agenda, he responded he had to defer to the Commission, and the Commission had made the direction clear with regard to cab agendas. According to NRS statute, and I can't read it because I don't have my glasses on, "By which you created the Incline Village cab, its purpose is," and I quote, "to assist the Board of County Commissioners in governing the town by acting as liaison between the residents of the town and the Board. The Advisory Council and the Board shall cooperate to inform each other of all matters of interest to the town and its residents," unquote. It goes on to say, "The existence and activities of the Advisory Council shall bring to bear on the problems of the town the knowledge of a representative group of residents thereof."
Thank you, Ms. Tysler.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Okay. We will close public comment and bring it back to the Board. Mr. Manager, item number eight.
Mr. Chair, item number eight is the Commissioners' County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commission Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Agendas, and I have nothing today.
Okay. Commissioners, I have, you've signed in first, Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask Mr. Manager Salaro, would you look into this Oxbow Park complaint? I don't understand why the City Council would tell a city resident to come to the County Commission to patrol and alleviate debris and fire-starting materials, as well as unlawful camping, to Washoe County Board of Commissioners? And if Reno can't do it, will you please ask our fire chief, or some of our other Health District people, or Human Services to take a look? What is the danger? What is, because I would hate to lose that beautiful, that is one of my favorite parks here in town. But I don't understand how that would in any way be our jurisprudence unless it is the homeless issue. But will you ask our fire chief, or somebody with the ability to go look at it as a subject matter expert, of what might be done, and then to write an email or a letter? On my behalf, I'll write it, if they could, with their expertise, to the mayor and the manager at the city of Reno? Because I don't understand what they, I mean, if we went in there and started cutting, I can tell you it'd be a big news story without coordinating with the jurisdiction that has governance over that. But if they're not going to do something, I also feel, as a human being, I have some sort of responsibility for this local treasure. So, Mr. Salaro, is that, is that clear enough? Just, you know, what can we do? How can we do it? And how can we do it sooner rather than later? It is really dry, too, that, I mean, everything is dry around here, which is crazy, because we've got so much water. But that park is dry, she is right, and she, I don't think she's even still here, and that, her property that is up against it is one of my favorite properties in town, too, because it is part of the park. But I just, can you, and can you also let them know, if indeed they did ask her to come to us, why they asked her to come to us, and what exactly they would like us to do? Because I'm very confused, and I don't like everything being pushed off to Washoe County and no coordination. It's not fair to the citizens who are paying taxes, who don't understand where they pay tax and where jurisdiction lines are. I had to double-check with the manager, that's a city park, right? I mean, and then I was starting to second-guess myself. But can we get some sort of formal agreement through the jurisdictions? Don't send people to different places. Be a one-stop place to solve their problems and give them the accurate information, rather than, which you know, none of us like this in customer service, if we get shuffled to everybody, and it's never the right information either. So, if you need me to take lead on that, I will, just as a regional approach to communicating to regional taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burkbigler, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the issue of the cab, I believe that has been requested by Commissioner Herman and myself on different occasions, but that this issue come back to us so that we can have another open discussion on it. I know why it was changed, and I know when it was changed, but I, we hear entirely too many comments from the public regarding what the purpose of a cab, why have a cab if all you're going to do is, you know, just talk about one or two little issues, and you don't talk about the broad issues that really impact the community? And from my perspective, in Incline Village, and I suspect, I won't speak for Commissioner Herman, but I suspect she might think the same way I do, is that Incline Village's major connection to us is through the cab, and we really need to have a different perspective on what we're doing up there. So, I would like to have that brought back, Mr. Manager, to this Commission, so that we could have a full discussion on why we're doing this and how we can change it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And thank you to Ms. Tysler for bringing that up again here at the meeting. And yes, we've been working on that for quite a while. I just hope we can bring back the cab that we used to have. And all the other board members are all saying the same thing. So, thank you for coming and reminding us.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Jung, you're signed in again.
Yeah, I support the cab. And we probably should wait till the new manager gets here, right? I mean, Dave, what do you expect Dave to do?
It's Monday.
Yeah, it's Monday. What do you expect Dave Salaro to do? But the cab needs to have some good parameters around it. I 100% agree, this county is so huge, and there is weather, inclement weather, and what's the county's favorite sign in the whole wide world? It's an orange cone for construction, right? I mean, it's everywhere. They need to be these satellite places. However, I want to put on the record, you Commissioners need to use them right, too. When they come to you for an idea, your people, no matter what it is, a stop sign, a pothole, et cetera, you say to them, "Go put that on the cab and see what the cab has to say." Because they really should be filtering it up to you. And I don't get a cab, I share it with Commissioner Herman, because most of my population is in the city of Reno. I used to have one, it was just duplicative. You don't want your tax dollars just wasted to say you have something, right? But Commissioners need to be taught how to use their cab. Anybody comes up with a bright idea, and you guys have a lot of them, and most of them are good, some are not so great, just like the rest of us, have them be filtered through the cab. Let the cab take a stand, make a vote on it, then that comes up to you and you carry it. That has been, when I did have a cab, I did love that for that, because you get a more democratic approach to, and you know, cabs in some ways are pretty fabulous, too, or at least NABs. I have a lot to do with NABs, because I came from the city of Reno. That's also a good place for, to tell, that whole board to say, "No, this is terrible idea, and we don't want to hear it again." And then you, as a Commissioner, could say, "Listen, you took it to the cab, they didn't love it." I mean, I just don't think Commissioners have used it correctly, and that's why we've never implemented it further. And let's, just to do institutional history, a little timeout, we got rid of the NABs and, or the cabs, because we had no money. And we're still in that position right now, too. We have no money. And Incline has sued us again for millions of dollars. We have zero dollars, so that's why the cabs were kind of brought back. I argued to never get rid of those cabs, because I think when you have no money is when you need to communicate more than, with people, right? When things are fabulous, you can get rid of communications. Sorry, communications, I think communications is good all the time. But communications are so much more vital when we're in a situation that you hate us for, because we have no money. So, I 100% support you two Commissioners. You can count on me to vote to backfill those, but there needs to be a lot more training, a lot more rollout, and a lot more best practices put into practice and hold us to our lanes. So, but yes, there's your third vote, Commissioners. Put it up, tell the next manager you want that on the agenda, and then we can operate it. And there's no reason to start it, that we can't start it right away while we're training Commissioners how to use them, too. So, and I have a prediction that we're probably going to go into some bad days, too, coming up, recession-wise. Not a political statement, just the way the cycles go. And that's when you need the cab, when we say, "We have $5, where do you want to put it?" So, and that's when you more need it, not less. So, when we're rolling in the gold, which is never going to happen with our tax structure, then you can get rid of all that stuff. But when it, people are feeling the pain of our cuts, right, wrong, or indifferent, you need more outreach, not less. Thank you. And more parks and more libraries. That's when people can't pay for internet and they can't buy books. So, it's kind of a flip of the way people look at it, but that's something I've always believed in. But absolutely, let's get that on the next agenda, once our manager gets in and kind of gets his roller skates on, and we can get balance. And yeah, but I, and I think you, I don't think you guys are against cabs either. You guys also saw the pinching we were getting so badly, and we had no place to go, and we still don't, but there's a way to figure that out, even if we use our discretionary funds. I'll even give you guys some of my discretionary funds, because I don't have a NAB or a cab. I piggyback with Commissioner Herman with the Sun Valley, and I love doing that, too, but it's just, I have no ownership of anything. So, absolutely, Commissioners, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Just clarification, the first speaker showed us some pictures of pests. I just identified them.
I know.
That was, that was all, she showed a common louse, a dust mite, and simyxlectularias, which was a bedbug, and then, of course, the mosquito. I know. There you go. I'm not the one who showed the pictures, Commissioner. I just, it was like a Jeopardy question, what is? I was just answering the question. Bit of trivia, bit of entomology trivia. Okay, Mr. Manager, we are on to proclamations, item number nine.
Today, we have three proclamations, items 9A1 through 9A3, starting out with a proclamation of December 14, 2019, as the Veterans Guest House Day. And we have the CEO of the Veterans Guest House, Ms. Maureen Leary, here in the audience, and Commissioner Herman will be coming down to cite the proclamation.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Herman, the floor is yours.
All right. Can you hear me? All right. Washoe County Proclamation. Whereas the Veterans Guest House celebrates its 25th anniversary on December 14, 2019, and whereas the Veterans Guest House opened their doors to serve the first guest on December 14, 1994, with the mission of providing temporary lodging for veterans and their families while they are in Washoe County for medical care. And whereas the house is located in the heart of Washoe County and is a home away from home for our veterans and their family members, serving veterans and families no matter their ability to pay. And whereas the guest house is one-of-a-kind facility in the country, existing almost exclusively on the support and generosity of the local Reno Sparks community, and receiving no government funding. funding. Hundreds of local volunteers help with the operations and fundraising of the guest house. And whereas, the idea for the house came from a group of local citizens and veterans who found people sleeping in their cars in the VA Medical Center parking lot, which meant veterans and their families could not afford accommodations while getting care at the medical center. The founders vowed on that day, never again on our watch. And whereas, nearly 80,000 nights of lodging have been provided to veterans and families over the years. The house has grown with the need, from four beds in 1994 to 33 beds today. And now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim December 14, 2019, as Veterans Guest House Day, and encourages all citizens of Washoe County to support the efforts of the Veterans Guest House to help our veterans through difficult times, dated this 19th day of November, 2019, signed by Von Hartung, Chair. I'm so proud to read this one. It's my favorite charity. Yes. You do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Would you, would you like to tell us, identify yourself and say?
I do want to thank you so very much for this proclamation. It's my first time at a commission meeting. I guess that doesn't say.
Tell us, tell us who you are.
I'm sorry. I'm Noreen Leary. I'm the CEO of the Veterans Guest House.
Thank you so much.
And I do want to invite all of you to come to the Veterans Guest House. On December 14, we're having a tailgate party to celebrate our anniversary and also watch the Army-Navy game. So, you're more than welcome to come. I'd love to see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, Commissioner Herman, I will take that as, in the form of a motion for that item, and I will make my way down. Commissioner Lucy, would you take over?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, ladies, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, sir.
Next item is a proclaim gratitude for the Washoe County Search and Rescue Volunteers. We had the search and rescue here last month, but then we've got an actual proclamation for their service. So, the whole group will come down, and Commissioner Chair Hartung will read the proclamation.
I'll wait for everyone to assemble around me. We're mustering the troops here. Don't get too far out. Come on, we want to crowd, because cameras can't see you.
I don't mind.
My goodness.
I can't, I can't.
Okay, for those of you who are deer hunters, deer cannot see that color. But everybody else can. Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. You know, we could not do what we do without volunteers. And what you all do is amazing. It's so selfless. When someone is, is lost, when they're unable to get themselves out of the hills, or something has just occurred, you show up and look for them, find them, whether it's with your ATVs or whether it's with an aircraft, or on foot, with dogs. I mean, it's, it's, it's humbling for me.
No.
Thank you so much. So, Vice Chair Lucy, whereas, people in Washoe County who find themselves in imminent danger or distress, or who become lost, especially in remote areas, depend on search and rescue services. And whereas, the volunteers within Washoe County Search and Rescue, operating under the direction of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, are part of a nonprofit organization who contribute their time, skills, and equipment to help those in need. And whereas, the volunteers within Washoe County Search and Rescue perform at least 90 rescue missions each year, saving taxpayers in excess of $900,000 annually. And whereas, the volunteer search and rescue organizations include six highly-trained teams, which are the Washoe County Air Squadron, the Washoe County Hasty Team, the Washoe County Specialized Vehicle Unit, the Washoe County Search and Rescue Incident Management Team, and the Wolf Search Dog Team. And whereas, the volunteers within Washoe County Search and Rescue Teams maintain the highest proficiency in search and rescue techniques and operations. And now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim their deepest gratitude to the Washoe County Search and Rescue Volunteers, and encourage all citizens of Washoe County to join us in acknowledging the county's search and rescue volunteers for their important, lifesaving work and selfless commitment to our community. It's dated this 19th day of November, 2019, and it's signed by my hand. Thank you so much. There's a, there's a bunch of you, but what I would like to do, I know this is going to take just a little time, does there, is there one member who would like to say a few words? And then I'd like each one of you to just walk through and introduce yourselves. Who wants, don't be shy. Oh, yeah, come on. Phil's pointing one way.
No, I always send my experts.
Good morning. I'm John Hamilton. I'm the supervisor for the search and rescue program. Without the work of our wonderful volunteers, my partner Dominic LeBlanc and I would never be able to do the mission that gets done with the specialty teams that we have. So, once again, thank you, guys, for everything that you do for us. Thank you.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, what I'd like you to do is just, you know, just start filing through and tell us, just tell us who you are, because I think it's important for us to acknowledge you and know your names. Start on the end. Go ahead. Come on down.
My name is Joe Petralia. I'm at WIC Sar. I'm the Communications Officer.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, sir.
Good morning. My name is Joe Musser. I'm also with WIC Sar.
Good morning. I'm Keith Barr. I'm Air 82 with the Air Squadron.
I'm Brian Blogg, President, Washoe County Search and Rescue. Thank you.
Roger Cunha, and I'm also with WIC Sar.
I'm Bob Springer, and I'm also with Washo, oh, WIC Sar.
David Gabany with WIC Sar, Member-at-Large.
Harry Stetson, WIC Sar Operations Officer.
Lance Watkins, Washoe County Air Squadron, Air 89.
Leanne Conway with the Air Squadron.
The one who holds the whole team together. Well done, Leanne.
Bill Marble, Sheriff's Air Squadron, Air 51.
Gregory Crants, Air 93, Observer for the Air Squadron.
Don Daggett, Vice Commander of the Air Squadron.
Lee Rhodes with IMT.
Terry Wilcox. I do Hasty Team as well as the Specialized Vehicle Unit.
Morning. Bob Bessalo, SVU.
Jack Wayman, President of Specialized Vehicle Unit.
Ryan Braun, Specialized Vehicle Unit.
Thank you.
Alan Janowski, Incident Management Team.
Sir.
Dom LeBlanc. I'm Deputy with Sheriff's Office, assigned to Search and Rescue.
Name's Dan Wheeler, Deputy Washoe County Sheriff's Office, assigned to Raven.
Deputy Joseph Baumann, Washoe County Sheriff's Deputy, and signed to Raven.
I'm Tim Baroon. I'm the Raven Mechanic.
Is that everybody?
That's it.
Okay, thank you so much. I don't know who gets this. Phil, should I give this to you?
Sure.
You didn't introduce yourself.
No. Just really, real quickly, for those of you who are here, I command a lot of teams, but this team's the most inspirational, and they're the ones that give me a lot of juice, just watching them work and what they give to the community. So, it's a pleasure every time I'm out with you guys. Thank you. Big round of applause.
Okay, thank you so much.
Next item is item 9A3, to proclaim November 19, 2019, as Grace Church Day, or Grace Church of Reno Day, sorry. And we've got a whole crew coming down. Commissioner Lucy will be reading this proclamation.
Vice Chair Lucy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
Hi. Russ. Hey, Russ, how are you? Bob Lucy.
Hi. How are you? How are you? Hey, Dan, good to see you. Hi. Hi. Hey. Good to see you.
Good morning, Chairman. Thank you for this opportunity to read this proclamation for you. You know, I'm honored to have these individuals, four individuals from Grace Church behind us today. I don't know if everybody understands the level of commitment this institution has given and played a role within our Human Services Agency over the last few years. They have been a dedicated, committed partner to Washoe County, not just in the way of helping community, human services, but really dedicated to the community as a whole, and really helping so many affected lives within our region. Pastor Dan, Lead Pastor Dan Frank is the Lead Pastor at Grace Church. He's joined with a number of individuals from the church as well, and they're here today to obviously honor the Grace Church of Reno Day. And so, it is with great honor that I get to read this proclamation to you today. Whereas, thanks to the generous donations through their Hope First campaign, Grace Church has played an integral role in the movement to fight drug and alcohol addiction over the past three years in giving Washoe County more than $1 million. And whereas, Grace Church has helped purchase and rehabilitate six recovery homes, with a total of 93 beds in Washoe County, which provides shelter and support to individuals while receiving substance abuse and addiction treatment. And whereas, thanks to Grace Church, Grace Church's investment in helping the citizens of Washoe County, 62 women and 39 children, once again, 62 women and 39 children have received assistance, in addition to 162 reunification visits have taken place. Seven child removals have been prevented, and 11 women have graduated from Washoe County's Women's Crossroads Program. And whereas, after more than 20,000 drug and alcohol tests, nearly 99.5% Women's Crossroads clients have tested clean and part of the Grace Church's continual dedication in combating addiction in Washoe County. And whereas, Grace Church represents generosity, love for their community, and has been a continual blessing in providing hope and helping hand to Washoe County's most vulnerable population during their time of need. Now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 19, 2019, as Grace Church of Reno Day, in recognition of the honorable contributions by Grace Church of Reno, dated this 19th day of November, 2019, signed by our Chair, Von Hartung. Congratulations, everybody.
Well done.
I have a couple things to say. Amber Howe, Director, Washoe County Human Services Agency. Just to give a little bit of background of our journey together, Washoe County, as all of you know, has been responding to the addiction crisis and the challenges with affordable housing for the last three years. And as Washoe County's population increases, we are attempting to find ways to decrease reliance on the use of shelters and other substance abuse treatment facilities, and create a more permanent, safer, long-term solution. The longer a person waits for treatment, their safety becomes more threatened, their situation becomes more dire, and their addiction worsens. A little over two years ago, an amazing friendship started between us and Grace Church, full of trust and optimism. Grace called us, asking about our interest in meeting with them to see how they could be involved with this crisis in our community. This was actually a first for us, for someone to call us and offer to help us with this significant undertaking, and we're so grateful for that. We have learned, as we stand here today, more than two years since our first meeting, that we continue to share a very important, common goal, that we want to help more and more and more people get better. To date, as Commissioner Lucy mentioned, Grace has purchased two homes, and four buildings have been renovated. We do believe, or we do not believe, that people wake up consciously and choose addiction. People suffering from the throes of addictions would not believe you if they, if you told them that they would need something several times a day just to be able to survive. Many people believe it's a life choice, and they choose to live this way. But everybody longs for shelter and a hand to hold when things get rough, and a light at the end of the tunnel. One of the items that you're going to be voting on later on in the agenda is the Jane Aubrey House. This is probably, this is definitely the most special house for Washoe County. It is being gifted to us, transferring from Ridge House, who currently ran the program. And Jane Aubrey is an individual, her mother is here, Julia, and I'm so, I'm so overwhelmed by having her presence here. She lost her daughter to an addiction, and the home has been named after her. And I just want to publicly thank her for trusting me and my team to take on this very difficult task, but also want to let her know that I commit to fight for Jane every day and help others and rescue them from their addiction. These successes have always been made possible when you have a local, private, public partnership that come together, and words will never really be able to express our gratitude. What an example of hope and love that they have given us. We are providing women an opportunity of a lifetime with big, open arms and a cup of stars to drink from. And I and Washoe County are overwhelmed by their generosity. I will continue to refer to all of these hope sites as the houses that fell from above, and I'm the luckiest director, because I have hundreds of people standing behind me, helping me tackle this devastating disease. Thank you for standing up and being part of the solution. Washoe County's children, mothers, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Pastor Frank, do you want to say a few words?
I just want to say that we're privileged to be a part of the process. And three years ago, when we entered into this process, we didn't realize the magnitude of the problem that existed in Washoe County. And as we got educated and realized it was a major problem, we felt like we were compelled by the Lord to throw our hat into the ring and do what we could do. And these gifts aren't a corporation giving it to the county. It is people who sacrifice. These are people that basically postpone purchasing of cars, or vacations, or whatever else they can do to fund Hope First. And so, again, we're just thrilled and grateful for the privilege of being able to do it.
Pastor, would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes. My name is Dan Frank, Pastor of Grace Church.
Thank you. Would all the rest of you like to say something? Any, please, or at least tell us who you are. Yeah, Ms. Aubrey, you want to introduce?
Hi, my name is Julia Pachetti, and I am Jane Aubrey's mother. And this is such a blessing. When she was suffering from addiction, I could not find her a place to heal in Washoe County. And since her death and the work that we have done altogether as a community and a church, it just fills my heart to know that, that we are helping so many individuals. And when parents make a phone call, there's an answer, and there's a place for them to go and heal, and not only get recovery, but have a real chance at living a healthy life. Thank you.
Thank you so much. God bless you.
My name's Karen Durst. I'm one of the executive directors in, at Grace, and it's just been an honor to see what God has done through the people of our, of our church.
Thank you.
Russ Ruiz, Executive Director of Finance at Grace Church.
Chairman, I just want to add one point, you know, and as we, we're joined here today by the four individuals with us, the one thing I want to point out is that the parishioners of Grace Church, the individuals that go there every Sunday and participate in service and watch, they really do care about the community. You've seen it. I personally been to a number of services at Grace Church and watched Pastor Frank lead service and, and really for that Hope First message. And I got to tell you, it's without, it wasn't, wouldn't be without those individuals that come out and donate and continue to support these types of programs. And I, like Director Howe said enough, there's not enough words to thank these individuals for the time and ever. not enough words to thank these individuals for the time and ever, and money that they put into our community. So, thank you so much. We really, truly appreciate it.
We have two more behind you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I know. I left these guys out.
Good morning. Steve McBrideham, the Division Director for Adult Services and Human Services Agency. And we couldn't be more pleased and grateful for our, just this beautiful relationship that we have with Grace Church. The support that they stand with us to address this need in this community is, is a foundation for new beginnings for many people. Thank you.
My name's Frankie Lemus. I am part of the HSA team, and I'm Behavioral Health Program Coordinator. And Grace Church is amazing, and the Crossroads Program, it's a great marriage.
You know, every time I turn around, you're giving us something. You, you guys are just amazing. You're just amazing. I, you know, vans and all manner of, of things. I mean, this is just one in the long list. You're such a blessing for our community and your parishioners. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, Vice Chair Lucy makes his way back up. I need a, I need a formalized motion for the three proclamations.
Approval of the proclamations as written and read.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by both Commissioners Herman and Lucy. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment under these items?
There's nobody signed in.
Okay, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're on to item number 10, Mr. Manager, donations.
Mr. Chair, that takes us to the donations for today, items 10A through 10C2.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if at this time, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to read the donations into the record for you, and I make this in the form of a motion. And as we just witnessed, you know, through donations is really a beneficial and tremendous partnership that we have with the community and how much that these individuals help and, and help move our programs forward. So, we want to thank all these individuals ahead of time. But first, 10A is a recommendation to accept a, let me start. Are you okay?
No, I, I just didn't want the Grace folks to leave. I'd like to do a photograph.
Yeah, should we stop? Let's do a stop. Should we stop before we read the donations?
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Can you guys come back down and, and do a photograph with us?
And Maureen.
And Maureen, yes. Our SARS folks left, but that would, that would be a great honor for us.
They're rescuing.
They are. I agree.
Did you do a picture with them last?
Yeah.
How many do they need?
We have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number 11, Mr. Manager, consent.
Item number 11 is our consent agenda today, items 11A through 11C3. Do you want to take special note of item 11B, which we've already spoken about this morning, which is the gift deed between Grace Community Church and Washoe County for the Aubrey House.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Approval of the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Vice Chair Lucy. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
None.
Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Mr. Manager, that takes us to item number 12.
Mr. Chair, item number 12 is a recommendation to increase fiscal year costs associated with the joint agreement between Washoe County, Nevada, and Axon Enterprise Incorporated to purchase additional body worn cameras, investigative licenses, and technological services. Estimated additional expenditures are $1,261,755 per the contract term, not to exceed $1,387,930. And if approved, authorize purchasing and contracts manager to execute all relevant contractual documents and agreements.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioners, do we need a presentation on this item? Okay. I will entertain a motion for item number 12.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have some correspondence that was submitted for item 12 from Ann Marie Grant that'll be placed on the record.
Well done. Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Vice Chair Lucy. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on item number 12?
There is not.
Okay. Seeing none, I will close that and bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Waiting.
Can I have the mover and the seconder, please?
The mover was Commissioner Burke Bigler, the seconder was Vice Chair Lucy.
Okay.
I apologize for not repeating that, Madam Clerk.
There we go.
Okay. All right. Well done. That leads us to item number 13. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, item number 13 is a recommendation to approve and execute an ordinance authorizing the issuance by Washoe County of its fully registered Washoe County, Nevada, Highway Revenue Fuel Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2019 or Series 2020, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $75 million for the purpose of refinancing outstanding obligations, providing the form, terms, and the condition of the bonds and the security thereof, and other details in connection therewith, and providing for its adoption as if an emergency exists, and providing the effective date hereof. Christine Valetich, Assistant County Manager, is here for this item.
Okay. Ms. Valetich, hold on just a second. You know, I love these refundings. This is, no, I do. I mean, I mean, when you look at the fiscal impact, the, it's anticipated to save some $23.6 million. I mean, it's, it's just, it's just amazing when we refinance these things. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm so thrilled that staff is on this, paying attention to the market and, and responding to that to save taxpayer dollars. Ms. Valetich, welcome.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Yes, on November 15th, at their meeting, the Regional Transportation Commission, or RTC, passed a resolution, and that's why we're here today. It's a request to refinance the outstanding Washoe County Highway Revenue Fuel Tax Refunding Bonds. The RTC wants to take advantage of lower interest rates. The existing bonds that are outstanding are the 2010 Series B and C bonds, and they come with an interest rate ranging between 6% and 7%. So, pretty high in today's market. It looks like the expected range, if we refinance these bonds, would be more in the 3% range. So, as the Chair mentioned, that's over $23 million in gross debt service savings on a net present value basis. In today's dollars, 13.6 million, or about 1.25 million per year. So, it's really a great savings there. The, I just want to emphasize that the refinancing will not change the term of the bond, so it's not going to extend the debt. They're still going to mature in February of 2040, so there's about 20 years left on these bonds. And the repayment source are existing fuel tax, fuel taxes on motor vehicles. So, there's no new taxes here being used for these bonds. It's an existing revenue source. It's a very stable revenue source. And for this current year, fiscal year 20, the RTC has budgeted and pledged $92 million in revenue. Currently, they have $326 million total outstanding debt. And so, with the proposed refunding, the aggregate debt service payments would be about $22 million a year. Sounds like a lot of money, and it is, but they have more than sufficient debt service covenant, uh, coverage. They've got revenues that are projected to be almost four times to cover that. So, typically, we look for 1.5, you know, as a minimum. They've got in the range of 3.9% or 3.9 times revenue to cover this debt service. And they've got a very strong financial position. Their general fund balance is approximately $88 million, which is 171% of fiscal year 2019 operating expenses. That's a very high amount. Of course, they do a lot of projects on a pay-as-you-go basis as well, but that, just to give you an idea of the strength of their finances. So, there's very, very minimal, if no risk to the county on this, and definitely just savings of over $23 million. And I wanted to remind the board that this ordinance does require a two-thirds vote of the board to pass. Also, Stephanie Haddock, our Chief Financial Officer for RTC, is here, and Kendra Follett from our Bond Counsel, Chairman and Howard, if you have any questions that are more technical, they're also here to answer those.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, I have you signed in, Commissioner Herman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I know you've done a good job of explaining today here. And I wondered if I could ask for a little bit more of your time so that it goes on the record and people can, can understand by listening to it. And so, I, what I've done is I've written down some questions that people have been asking me about these bonds, because I know, when I first started on this, this board, I, bonds were just like, how does that work, you know? But anyhow, so like I said, there's a lot of confusion out there. If you could, you know, go through this with me. So, so people kind of mistrust what we do sometimes when they don't understand it. And maybe I don't understand it. I don't know. But, so there's, they, they just need some questions answered. So, here was, here's some of the questions. We pay taxes for roads through the fuel tax. That's what they were saying. And only certain areas really benefit from those taxes. I mean, they're putting three and three together and two and two together and trying to figure out, how does this work? And, and is this motor vehicle tax for only RTC roads? They wanted that explained. And another person, why, why does almost no funding to, you know, to the Washoe County, northern Washoe County roads? And, and repairs and that sort of thing. Maintenance is kind of slim there. I know we're short of money, but, but when we, and then here's the next question. When we borrow by means of issuing bonds, aren't we stealing from the people, taking money that was intended for building and repairing and maintaining safe roads for taxpayers to drive on? Okay, so then another question was, does refunding bonds simply divert the money to alternate uses? Where does it go? Another question is regarding stewardship of the community. We have, they wanted that explained, how that benefited them, and kind of gave, you know, what the profit would be on that or the savings. And then another one is, we all pay the very large fuel tax. It's the highest in the state, and our county roads are falling apart, and some due to development that isn't being compensated for during construction or damage during construction, but mostly due to neglect. These are questions that are being asked. We need a better plan. Fuel tax is not working for the people, only some. And then- I mean, it's, it's just, it's just amazing when we refinance these things, and so I'm, I'm so thrilled that staff is on this, paying attention to the market, and responding to that to save taxpayer dollars. Ms. Valetich, welcome.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Yes, on November 15th, at their meeting, the Regional Transportation Commission, or RTC, passed a resolution, and that's why we're here today. It's a request to refinance the outstanding Washoe County Highway Revenue Fuel Tax Refunding Bonds. The RTC wants to take advantage of lower interest rates. The existing bonds that are outstanding are the 2010 Series B and C bonds, and they come with an interest rate ranging between 6% and 7%, so pretty high in today's market. It looks like the expected range, if we refinance these bonds, would be more in the 3% range, so as the Chair mentioned, that's over $23 million in gross debt service savings on a net present value basis. In today's dollars, $13.6 million, or about $1.25 million per year. So it's really great savings there. I just want to emphasize that the refinancing will not change the term of the bond, so it's not going to extend the debt. They're still going to mature in February of 2040, so there's about 20 years left on these bonds. And the repayment source are existing fuel taxes, fuel taxes on motor vehicles, so there's no new taxes here being used for these bonds. It's an existing revenue source. It's a very stable revenue source, and for this current year, fiscal year '20, the RTC has budgeted and pledged $92 million in revenue. Currently, they have $326 million total outstanding debt, and so with the proposed refunding, the aggregate debt service payments would be about $22 million a year. Sounds like a lot of money, and it is, but they have more than sufficient debt service coverage. They've got revenues that are projected to be almost four times to cover that. So typically, we look for 1.5, you know, as a minimum. They've got in the range of 3.9% or 3.9 times revenue to cover this debt service, and they've got a very strong financial position. Their general fund balance is approximately $88 million, which is 171% of fiscal year 2019 operating expenses. That's a very high amount. Of course, they do a lot of projects on a pay-as-you-go basis as well, but that's just to give you an idea of the strength of their finances. So there's very, very minimal, if no risk, to the county on this, and definitely just savings of over $23 million. And I wanted to remind the board that this ordinance does require a two-thirds vote of the board to pass. Also, Stephanie Haddock, our Chief Financial Officer for RTC, is here, and Kendra Follett from our Bond Counsel, Sherman and Howard, if you have any questions that are more technical, they're also here to answer those.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, I have you signed in, Commissioner Herman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I know you've done a good job of explaining today here, and I wondered if I could ask for a little bit more of your time so that it goes on the record and people can, can understand by listening to it. And so I, what I've done is I've written down some questions that people have been asking me about these bonds, because I know, when I first started on this, this board, I, bonds were just like, how does that work, you know? But anyhow, so like I said, there's a lot of confusion out there, and if you could, you know.
Absolutely.
Go through this with me. So, so people kind of mistrust what we do sometimes when they don't understand it, and maybe I don't understand it, I don't know. But, so there's, they just need some questions answered. So here was, here's some of the questions. We pay taxes for roads through the fuel tax, that's what they were saying, and only certain areas really benefit from those taxes. I mean, they're putting three and three together and two and two together and trying to figure out, how does this work? And is this motor vehicle tax for only RTC roads? They wanted that explained. And another person, why does almost no funding, you know, to the Washoe County, northern Washoe County roads, and repairs and that sort of thing? Maintenance is kind of slim there. I know we're short of money, but, but when we, and then here's the next question, when we borrow by means of issuing bonds, aren't we stealing from the people, taking money that was intended for building and repairing and maintaining safe roads for taxpayers to drive on? Okay, so then another question was, does refunding bonds simply divert the money to alternate uses? Where does it go? Another question is regarding stewardship of the community, we have, they wanted that explained, how that benefited them, and kind of gave, you know, what the profit would be on that or the savings. And then another one is, we all pay the very large fuel tax, it's the highest in the state, and our county roads are falling apart, and some due to development that isn't being compensated for during construction or damage during construction, but mostly due to neglect. These are questions that are being asked. We need a better plan. Fuel tax is not working for the people, only some. And then another was, so what is the difference between, I mean, why is RTC the one that's mentioned as far as roads? And is there a misuse of funds or poor management? You see why I had to come here today and ask these questions for, I mean, for them? And then $76 million could easily drain the swamp in Lemon Valley, that's just another comment. And is it a Peter and Paul thing? Are we borrowing against money we haven't received yet, and for what purpose? I'm sorry, but.
This is a one-off, Mr. Chair. This is an ed- excuse me.
This is an ed- this either needs to go through.
Hold on, Commissioner.
I'm almost done.
Let her finish, and then I'm gonna.
So, how does it work? The last one is, is it common practice to gamble the people's money? I mean, they're, like I say, they're concerned out there, they want to know what's going on, so how do we answer them, and how do we figure this out?
Okay, I'll take a stab at it.
Okay.
A lot of questions there.
Yeah, there was, I mean.
They all, all are similar.
Yes, some of them are very similar.
So will you explain RTC 5, that was a voter-approved tax?
I can, or maybe Stephanie.
Or maybe Stephanie can do that.
I would ask Stephanie to come up and explain that, and maybe talk about some of the major projects that RTC is doing, but I.
Go ahead, go ahead and.
And then I'll come back on the dead stuff. Okay, sorry.
Hi.
Welcome, Miss Haddock.
Hi, Stephanie Haddock, the Director of Finance and CFO for the Regional Transportation Commission, RTC. Specifically on these bonds, they are, the pledged revenue against this is the fuel tax that is given to the RTC. Now, fuel tax is countywide, and there are segments that go to the RTC, portion goes to the county, portions go to the city. This is just the base nine cents plus indexing over the years. We started the indexing, which was what Commissioner Hartung alluded to, is RTC 5, the voters voted on annual indexing against the Producer Price Index, PPI indexing, and that's done annually each year, and that's why our fuel taxes increase, and it's all the fuel taxes. It's not just RTC's portion, but also the counties, and the cities are all increased by that same indexing. But the pledged revenue that is for this bond is only the RTC's. And to answer the question, yes, that is for the regional roads. RTC spends our fuel tax on the regional road system, which is outlined in our Regional Transportation Planning Document, which can be found on our website, rtcwashoe.com. It's up to the counties and the cities how they spend their portions of the fuel tax, which is supposed to be, yes, for local roads. I'm trying to remember all the questions. I think one of the other ones in there was something to do with, oh, what the money, where this money's going. So this money is, it's just like, refunding is just like refinancing your house. There is no new money to be put on any roads. We already took this debt out some time ago, back in 2010, and it was, as Christine pointed out, at a higher interest rate. Now, the bond market is allowing for a lower interest rate, so we're going back out, we just resell the bonds, refinance your old debt to a new debt with a new rate. So it's lowering our debt service. Our debt service used to be about $27 million. After this refunding, it'll be around $22 million a year. We've gone through two refundings now. This is our second one. We did one last year for 2013 and 2009 bonds, and saved additional $3.5 million on that service, that annual debt service. So that's what we're doing now, is just going out and refunding some more bonds so that we're getting a lower interest rate and putting actually more money out onto our road program, and again, RTC's regional road program.
Okay, thank you, Miss Haddock.
Anything other questions? Is that good?
You did very well.
Okay, Ms. Valetich, anything more?
I would, I would just add, Stephanie said it very well, we're simply refinancing existing debt, just as you would if you are going to refinance your house. Interest rates are much lower, and the savings provide additional funding for regional roads.
That's exactly what this is. Just puts more money into the system. Okay, Commissioners, I see no one else signed in. Madam Clerk, would you, would you call public comment, please?
I have Ms. Catherine Snidiger signed in.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Snidiger. I'm a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural woman. That is my status in the county, in case you wonder why I keep saying that, because I am not a person. We have a problem with these bonds. They're supposed to be voted on. Now, I didn't see anything that was up there that says Nevada Revised Statute says this for refunding fuel tax bonds. And I'm reading through the ordinance that you're pretending as if this is an emergency again, and I want to know what you're going to do about misappropriation of funds. I have a letter from Mr. Liparelli that says that the fuel tax you did in March of this year was to pay for debts, not road maintenance, not new roads, it went to pay debts. And now you want this. That's $295,000 worth of debt you're giving us on fuel tax. Where is the statute that allows you to refund these bonds? Because the statutes I read say it's mandated, it has to be voted by the, it has to be approved by the voters. The voters didn't approve last March's bond that you snuck in, called it "as if it were an emergency," which is meaning you're pretending it's an emergency, and you're putting excessive taxes on the people. And that's unfair. And there is nothing that says that money's going to go where it says it's going to go, because Mr. Liparelli already gave me a letter that says it went to pay debts. That's where the fuel tax money went. How is that even possible? Once they get the money, it goes wherever it wants. We don't have anything in writing that says it won't. And where is your Washoe County Administrative Procedures Manual so that we can read exactly what each of the processes are to refund this bond? The state has state administrative manuals, but this county makes ordinance do, just go through, pick out good things you like, throw it together, and say that's what it's going to be. Where is your administrative procedures manual? Let's not forget, you get federal money. You're bound by federal rules and regulations for the fuel taxes. I think you better think about this, because you could be in some trouble.
Thank you. Okay.
There's nobody else signed in. Would you like a first reading?
We, we need a, we need a first reading.
This is bill number 1832, and if approved, it will be ordinance number 1645, an ordinance authorizing the issuance by Washoe County of its fully-registered Washoe County, Nevada Highway Revenue Fuel Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2019 or Series 2020, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $75 million for the purpose of refinancing outstanding obligations, providing the forms, form, terms, and conditions of the bonds, and the security therefore, and other details in connection therewith, and providing for its adoption as if an emergency exists, and providing the effective date thereof.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burke, bigler.
Move approval.
Second.
To introduce bill number 1832.
No, we already did that. This is.
This is.
This is number 1645.
This is the ordinance, my bet. 1645. Ordinance 1645, thank you, thank you.
Seconder agrees.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I haven't heard any oppositions. I'm assuming that it passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Manager, we are on to item 14. Do we need a closed session?
We do not need a closed session, so with your permission, I'd like to move to item 15, which is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Nice.
For public comment, I have Catherine Snidiger that would like to speak, and then she will fill out the paperwork in the back.
Okay. Ms. Snidiger.
Thank you. Non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural woman. You don't get to usurp the state legislature. You do it all the time, but when it comes to taxes, you don't get to do that. You don't get to create your own, pay attention, Mr. Hartung.
I am not in charge.
Yeah, some respect. You're not the governing body. The state is the governing body. You do not have the authority to appoint yourselves the governing body, and we're pretending to, this ordinance is an emergency, that's what "as if it were" means, on the people. It's excessive taxation. You represent men and women of the county, not corporations, unless you are in fact acting as a corporation, which I believe you are. So if you're acting as a corporation, then I guess it's fine. Problem is, it doesn't apply to men and women. And I'm so happy, too, because I'm going to be turning in all my receipts and getting all of my taxes back on fuel, because native-born citizens aren't required to pay the tax. Bet you didn't know that, so at least I get to put a little chink in this, because you don't have authority to do what you're doing. And you all vote for this like you're saving us all of this money. You're not. Not saving anybody any money. You overstep your authority at every place. Oh, yeah, and aren't you supposed to be, well, I guess this is part of my quality of life that you so like to throw around. You step overboard, you keep doing it, you know you don't have absolute immunity. You do know that all, don't you? Not even judges have absolute immunity. So please, you should give the public consideration rather than yourselves. Thank you, Mr. Hartung, for your attention.
Madam Clerk, is there any other public comment?
There is nobody else signed in.
We will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, item number 16.
Item number 16 is our Commissioners, County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include board and commission updates.
Do you have any such items, Mr. Manager?
The only thing I've got today is, thank you for the past few months, June 14th till, well, it'll be Monday, but I'd like to welcome Eric Brown on Monday, his first day, so I just want to make sure that that was on the record. Thank you.
Okay. I see no one else signed in. Commissioners, we are adjourned.